So.
It's not in your. In.
Okay, it's open.
Good evening, I'm going to open up the local select board meeting on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. We have any amendments to the agenda?
I do, um, one is, um, Belinda received, uh, co- co-file. Um, you could do the second set of books, um, and that is in your packet. Suppose we could put that down in your, your select review.
Uh huh.
And, um, then.
Yeah, I have that. I have, um. You know, there was a bridge out to me.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything I want to add? Now we'll take the approval of the minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-two, I'll take a moment to approve.
I'm going to come up with a little.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have, um, any additions, corrections, solutions, comments? Hearing none, I guess, uh, we will, uh, move to approve. All those in favor? I opposed. Don't care any. Comments for the community?
No one.
Okay, Tom?
Um, this Monday, the force committee is having a meeting in the school gymnasium, and, uh, we're talking about making it, uh, hybrid so that they could engage with more people.
Right.
And so that created the question my head if there would be any interest among the town to do any kind of electronic accessibility for town meeting in March. Thought maybe plant the seed with you guys. Uh, I don't know what's legal about it, what would be?
People could, uh, follow what's going on, but they couldn't vote.
Couldn't vote?
No.
Would you?
Unless they come in, we'll have two things we won't be voting on by now, the school budget and town officers. Other than that, um, they would have to be.
Um, I've had six. Um. So the, the other thing I was wondering, so that's kind of what I assumed is that participating in a floor vote virtually would just look really realistic thing. But would you entertain people being able to speak into the meeting virtually? Or would you prefer it just be sort of a live stream?
No, I prefer it to be a live stream and maybe recorded if people wanted to watch it later or something, but, um. Be too confusing, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely would be complicated.
Right.
Um, but I don't think it's impossible, and this meeting this Monday gives me an opportunity to try. But I was thinking about it. Um, and then, uh, there is also one other level. Elmore has used this tactic where they included a Zoom meeting, people were able to watch the meeting, but nobody was allowed to speak into the meeting, but they could type questions into the comments, and a moderator of the meeting could, could read them into the meeting, and that was another plus.
I've attended, um, many meetings like that, too.
I didn't.
Or just the ask questions chat.
Yeah. So I just thought I'd plant that seed, um, just having thoughts or interest.
Um. Does anyone have any thoughts you want to think about it and bring it up a bit closer?
Or even potentially make it something to ask, to ask people about at town meeting about going forward.
So the only thing they'd be allowed to do is maybe just questions, but like here.
Yeah, I agree. So basically, it's just streaming, right?
Well, this streaming is, is, is option one, streaming and someone, people being able to, um, ask questions through the chat, which would have to be then relayed to somebody to answer the question, um. How about we think about it?
What was the point of me bringing it up?
Um, put it on our December meeting as it gets closer, and we have time to call it over and decide whether it would be too disruptive to, um, how the regular meeting flows or whether it would be, um, an added transparent bonus to people. But look how much we have, we have Monica is the only true person that ever comes on unless we have a speaker.
Yeah. It'd be, uh, telling me there'd be an opportunity for people to even become aware of it.
Uh huh.
As well.
Okay, we'll bring that up, um, in December.
Certainly.
Anything else?
Okay.
Okay. Just a few things in our, um, correspondence. Basically, it's, um, the notice is, we're starting to get notices for requests for the town report from our service agencies. And to see if town reports the last one here, um. What does this notice appear in? Michael Blair? Stats Congress? On Superior Court, I didn't know anyone.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is, uh, to recover our two hundred dollars from the the dog rescue. And the court is asking us to appear. I don't know if we really need to, it's a five, I think it's a five-minute segment, which is just an update where their, their hearing stands are.
But says this is to notify you to appear that the court named above for the following.
Yeah.
So do you know or you guess?
We should be there. Sure.
Do you actually know before we don't have to be there?
No, um, I'm not going to follow, um, the victim advocate to find out, uh, if we're necessarily necessary.
And I think you should, you know, learn your word. Um. That was about it. We will move on to our budget here in a few. We have health officer fire board, who has heard his comment, I guess he's not appearing, I don't know if there's any, any contact about his budget?
Yeah, I, I've spoken to Bernard, um, and he would like to leave the budget the same for the upcoming fiscal year. With a fire warden salary of eight fifty and a health officer salary of eight fifty. Um, and your health officer, there is also a five hundred dollar, um, expense kind of and as far as I can tell, he has not booked anything against that this year. But his request is, is all remains the same.
Okay. And then the animal control officer.
So there's both the Dean today, and Dean is also requesting that the state of the center. He indicated that he, he does not put in for mileage, um. He, he doesn't track mileage, he doesn't put in for mileage, um, there is a thousand dollar budget for mileage, uh, but he indicated he, he will not be using there. Um, and he asked for the same, um, compensation that is currently under, which is, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
With all we're trying to let him do, I think he really should use the.
Well, he has a choice. Um.
He knows it's there.
He is, and, and, and the account, the accountant said that he has to put in for that front. Um, and he wishes not to. You can't just give him a hundred dollars a month, or we would have to tax him.
Yeah.
And he could burn out.
Yeah, he's not doing it by choice.
So all the other parts will come into our select ones budget, so we'll, um. We can revisit, I guess, the mileage thing, whether we want to take it out or drop it down or whatever. But, um, it's there, or he hasn't used it in a couple of years, or he doesn't want to try it. You have any questions on those budgets in the morning? If not, let's move on to the project managers before.
Okay, um, a couple of things, the, the cloud talk, with theoretically we deliver it tomorrow. It could be an exciting and quick thinking venture. Um, handyman update, uh, Nathan, um, has been, has picked up, uh, on his sixty-nine hours as handyman, uh, he's accomplished a great deal in a very short period of time. Uh, he, uh, has, I, I won't read down all of the things that he's done, but in general, he has taken responsibility for inter-inspections, uh, fire extinguisher inspections, um, those kinds of thing things, and he documents that as goes, as, as goes along. He's contacted Lawrence, um, set up appointments for furnace inspection before winter. Uh, he has, he is still in the kind of process of finishing the painting of the garage. Um, he's, he's a bit of a perfectionist, so he watches the weather really close, but it looks like this weekend he's, he will be done with that. Um, he's, he's picked up the responsibility, taking trash at transfer station. Um, and he's, he's, just in two short weeks, he's knocked nineteen items off our list, some of which have been there for years or more.
He's a go-getter.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, the important thing that I want to convey about, um, his activity is that, uh, he's very good at following the list. So in my office is a list, and we add this list wherever projects somebody might come along with it. Uh, it's added to the list. Where it's written in, I will, you know, I'll refresh this list about every two weeks. Um, he does put down the date which he accomplished, completed something. Um, but I think it's really important that any, uh, jobs that you might have for him go on the list. Uh, because that would be having six or seven people coming in, puts highest priority in what to do, so, and.
Well, while I'm thinking of it, the handle in the bathroom, the town hall is about ready to fall out.
Okay.
It can just, just screw tightened.
Yeah. But, um, I just think all in all, the, the handyman, yeah, I think from a financial standpoint, we, we will do well. Uh, once we start to incorporate flowering.
Yes.
Flowering is built into this one. Um. There are some projects that he's doing that require purchasing supplies, um, and I don't know if the board wants to renew those supply purchases. Uh, or we should set a, you know, a limit in which we can buy. Uh, for instance, he, he rebuilt the steps at town hall, we had devised a long room to get that and, um, and items like that bearing there, so.
My guess is no, it's just another layer of bureaucracy, and I would say, you know, two fifty is the limit, you know, it's that. You know, water heater or something, it's, it should come before, that's my feeling, you can ask.
I agree with that.
Or just put his name on the charge accounts, um. You know, maybe you should sign off from them when they come in.
Yeah.
Just so you know what's going on.
Yeah.
But we don't need to.
But I mean, it delays everything for two weeks.
Right.
Yeah, um, one of the things, uh, we were, when we put the new heater into the garage, there was a concern that the boiler room would be get cold, which is where all the water, um, comes in. And we came up with all these great ideas about having walls and walls and stuff, and, uh, Nathan came up with, um, a heater, which is, uh, like a little radiator, and it heats up oil pot. And it's fantastic, very inexpensive.
Electric heater?
It's electric, but it has no coils, so there's no.
And what is it?
It's a ceramic heater, yeah.
Uh huh.
He's resourceful.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's refreshing.
Yeah.
Well, we'll save this money in the water room, we start maintaining our buildings better.
Yeah. He power washed all the doors in this side of the building, it's much, much better. Anyway, you can go to the listing, you see all the things he done, otherwise it would consume weight. Um, so C A I update is that my understanding is that, um, they're going to come and visit with Deb and Tom or get to get some of the final um, scan.
They're going to scan, uh, surveys. Or he will, Franco will. Rather than Tom and I spending a couple of days trying to make photographs and tape them together before we do that.
Yeah. But he'll be in next week, right?
Yes.
Um, LED lights, uh, I don't know if we need to get heat involved in this, but uh, these fluorescent lights, um, are becoming obsolete, um, they'll soon be illegal. And there is, uh, uh, a Vermont, uh, yeah, what's called, anyway, they subsidize the purchase of.
Efficiency Vermont.
Yeah, efficiency. And so, um, is this the thing you should get the?
No, we can just don't, we've done it before, we've got them come and do assessments and stuff, and I would just call them.
Okay, uh, just a reminder that October meetup day is a Saturday, um. There, uh, Michelle will be back, she's been in Portugal, um. There, it is been listed in Front porch farm, a couple of times, and there's going to be a chili and sloppy jazz available at, at, at D E O care. Um, hope see, uh, this is the textile events, they are in place, they're there. Um, and we'll have a kickoff this weekend, um, in which Michelle will be there to try to, uh, manage, um, and to train, educate people how to package textile. Um, ARPA, we talked about ARPA in our last meeting where, um, because of the delay of reviewing motions, um, there were certain projects that did not get listed as ARPA, and that has been corrected with the exception of the garage heater. Uh, the garage heater and the associated electrical, uh, I believe was intended to be in our expense.
Now, the motion wasn't that, no, it was to come out of the equipment on.
It is.
Not that, oh, yes, that's what it said, yes.
Okay.
Unless you want to change it, but that's what it said. I don't know.
Okay. We've written a letter to Damian Weg, who is the owner of this, uh, trailer on School Street, the abandoned trailer right up here.
Uh huh.
Um, with, and, and he sent him a certified letter, uh, just noting that it's in, it's in real disrepair. Um, and what, what is, what is this plan? I, we flew this up for Taxio, I think this was a Taxio purchase, and it went back up to Taxio, but he still owns it.
Did he ever respond?
Not yet, no. My concern is that this is going to go from Taxio to Taxio to Taxio, and this ISO is just going to stay there. So what I want to do is address whoever owns it at whatever period of time, and do something about this, you know.
Now, he has to sign.
Registered lawyer, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
He has to sign.
Yeah, he was, he was a certified little, yeah.
Did he do that, or?
Well, this, they, the certificate came back, but I didn't see a signature on it, I don't know what the postman discussed. I thought that they did not send it back, they didn't get a signature.
Right.
So I'm going to have to investigate then.
Hmm.
Um.
It would be a really good property, I think, once the rail trail and bridge are done.
Yeah. They did. It's in, it's in bad state and disrepair.
Right.
Um. With co-file, um, another issue with co-file is that we, um, there was the issue of static ID, and, uh, what I've learned from co-file, they separated as two different companies, one's called Gov O S and the other one's co-file. And the confusion that that created internally for their company is unbelievable. But the bottom line is that the static, uh, the cloud version is not available as of yet. So we're going to have to continue to subscribe to, um, consolidate the communications until, until that's available, and the date is unknown at this point. Um, hybrid system, um. One of the things that, uh, Nathan is available for is to help finish this off. Um, because I think that, uh, it's, uh, we're at the point where we, we are sitting, get requests for ad hoc meetings, you're, you're at work or, or whatever, and, um, so he is available to help to get it, to get it to them. Turn it on and go.
We're close. One thing left is to get into this wall, into the ceiling, and melt these microphones.
Uh huh.
And other than that, it would just be creating a little note explaining how to start the system. Otherwise, I mean, this is ready to go, even without the microphone, you can run meetings in here now.
Okay. Knowing that confused me, it was like you couldn't turn on the monitor.
Right, I can, I can work on, on a, like a one-page.
Yeah.
Startup laminated statement of, see, see how it goes for a while, and make adjustments.
Right. Um, brownfield testing, we ordered brownfield testing for, um, the Champlin Oil property, and, um, so we're, we're waiting for that to come through, it was approved. Um, we're waiting for it to improve, um, because I again, I'd like to ask the board if we want to continue to pursue this. The steps would be to do the brownfield analysis, which is no cost to the town. Uh, if we don't see anything, uh, there that is a problem, uh, start to publish Champlin Oil about price and present to the builders that, um, have the. Um.
Well, I can give you my opinion, I think because there was a garage there, and there were underground tanks there, that, um, they will probably need a phase two to remediate, which I don't think would, um, happen before town meeting, so you might want to, if the board is in favor of moving forward, you might want to ask the voters anyway at town meeting, giving us the authority to negotiate um, once those studies are done, but I don't think that it will be that fast. My opinion, but it would be nice to know how the board feels about that property.
It's more parking. Other than that, I.
Thinking of it proactively in terms of, um, you know, our downtown. And those, you know, some of those buildings, businesses going across the street where bugs are, you know, really no parking there. Um. Is it up to us to provide parking? Not really, but it kind of is up to us to pro- provide, um, some economic stability to our town and our tax base, but that's how I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I don't really have anything in mind.
Exactly.
But if the members on the board are totally opposed to it, we should just stop here.
Fortunately, I think that we should continue with, it's, it, it, it abuts the existing kind of property. Um, and it just puts the town a little bit more in control of that, that downtown, downtown area, downtown fifteen area, um.
That and when the rail trail, who's completed, people could probably park if they go to the rail trail, and they probably do.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Could be used for an E V station, could be used as a commuter station, could be used for parking. Um, all of which would not preclude some future use for it.
Uh huh. Let's go ahead.
The town would have control, anybody having that parcel. Yeah. And things like that. Um, and finally, this phone screener, uh, that I know that we talked about before, this was a, a program that we did not get in the last, this we hear, but it is available to us. We did not get in unless this we hear, but it is available to us this fiscal year. I spoke with Rodney Moore today, get more detail on it. Ease of the opinion that what people are finding with this particular grant, it just is what it is. Is that the actual cost of the equipment they're sponsoring has become much higher than it was indicated. When they first did it, because so there, there is advice is that we go out and look at the equipment itself, price it. And we, and. Then calculate the town contribution. So you really understand how much the town is going to get into this. And we have until July, uh, do that. If we want to participate in this, if we find something that's really useful, like it. Doesn't hit the town too hard, we have to buy it and then get, apply for, um. We can stay there. So I just want to get an update in there for us.
I think, Monica, an exception maybe about the brownfield.
Oh.
Monica?
Could I ask for clarification about the brownfield and what you're talking about with parking?
The, um, so the town of Wilkens owns 90 feet, it goes from the grove closest to. The Wilkens store, we own 90 feet, the rest of that parking area in downtown Wilkens is owned by Champlain Oil. There was a gas station there years ago. And they approached the town to see if we had any interest in purchasing it.
Oh, wow.
So we, um, we did get a letter from them, um, they had done some study, but there was, they did take the tanks out. They were supposed to be monitoring it, which I don't see any report of them doing that. So we approached the planning commission to start a brownfield study of phase one and depending on that. Reported, might go on to a phase two.
Okay.
It's not something we were looking for, but it's something that's there now and, um. I don't know, my personal feeling is that, um. We shouldn't let it go.
The parking area that's already that we're using, like the one by the post office, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, someone else could buy that lot and build something on it.
Huh, I, I, you're, you're just, your mention about bringing this to town meeting, I think would be really important. Because I think this is an issue that very few people are aware of. Especially the brownfield.
We could never purchase it without bringing it to the townspeople, but this is just something that's started to develop. Um, and we need to get some more background information.
Right, I, I think that, you know, as from my personal standpoint, and who am I to say, but from my personal standpoint. You know, that parking area is very important to the people of the town. I know for a fact that somebody spent the night down there because they couldn't make it up, no. So I think that there may be other people that, that value it also.
So we will be discussing it now, meaning when we have more information to provide.
So thank you for the clarification.
Seth?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to the school street bridge conceptual plans, final comments. You want to talk about this, Craig, you weren't at meeting where there's way ahead where the change is online.
There's, uh, there's no dramatic, dramatic change. The drawings, uh, they did. And clarify what, what those drawings were saying. And it included the pain and direction of the bridge. Where it's a little, little one up the hill. And also. They feel that there's much better visibility if you cross the bridge and raise the side from the dude that. There will include a sidewalk area, which is not raised. With a straight sidewalk, so we can bow it. And the ideas are right down here and continuing on. And then there was discussion. Putting a, with the wastewater committee wanted, which is, you know, in its investigative stages. But did want to get involved with the bridge engineers early on. Indicate that we want to take people across the bridge. So that if there, if we do get a wastewater system going. From the area of, I mean, the game comes across the bridge. Little compass there maybe, and so there was that discussion as well. And the engineers felt that's very possible, very standard. So no issues with it. So I was, from my perspective, this was just a review of, but really something new, I think, of the design of the bridge. Was there any other radical, there was no?
No.
Most surprising.
Bridge is going to be a little bit longer. So Kurt and I had a meeting with them only because we had to do this water community because they had questions on. That portion of it, so that's when we learned. What these drawings actually meant, the, the, they said that the, um. Pipe would have to go on the side, not underneath, but they, they didn't see that. That would be a problem if that's how we move forward. But other than that.
Other words, your standard bridge crossing for most things like, like natural gas, water lines. If you have a water system, water, wastewater, standard stuff.
Yeah. Obviously, obviously, given vibes on that.
But we just want them to be able to design it so they could hold that. In case. We need to do.
So I, I'm inclined after. Attending that meeting is to, from my point of view, is to say. The plan looks, looks good.
Yeah.
There were no further questions. Oh, the only, there was one, one small, but that was. If the bridge, you know, takes this different angle. Is there going to need to be a land acquisition or? Something that mentioned, and that they did not have the answer to. So, you know, where does it?
Well, up at the top, well, because they are on that land.
At the top, right?
Yeah, um, it might be. Yes. That's how it's going to go on their side. They weren't sure about one of the abutments, I think.
Right. So mainly to ease that, pretty small. So they're going, they're going to get that question.
Right.
What was the funnel length of the bridge from button to button?
I don't know, I read this.
But they couldn't find it on file. That's why I was asking, because Sid, you talked about. And they mentioned.
Uh, that question, yeah, I didn't.
We were supposed to be talking about terms of subject, but not the bridge itself.
Yeah, I, I think the release, they're going to have to look for is, is with Phil Teal. Yeah.
It will be on the other side of the road.
It'll be on the, this side.
This outside?
Well, there's where the driveway is for Westover. And that area is where Phil owns.
Right.
She owns the driveway, this side, but our right of way cuts across there. It's on the other side, Phil Teal owns. So it's, it's going to put him putting that button. The bridge. Our right of way takes care of this side, it's the apartment side.
But that other side isn't, um.
Just not that large.
Or anything, probably with anybody. It just kind of falls off. He's taken on one piece that he can use. Michelle.
So I don't know if you've been talking with. Westover?
No, we don't.
Don't know about having to mail box now.
Well, they said 2025 and they kind of hinted it might. Yeah, so I think.
Because it seems like you have to have. You have to have, I can't think of his name, build a job over here.
My home.
My both in. Teal and Westover, theirs.
Yeah, I think we're a long way on that.
But if you do that, you may ask the whole room to be moving.
I think the state will need to come, they have a right to reverse and really actually address this, um. Or is that more shared?
That's just, says you have.
Yeah. But do you have any comments on this design? Because we need to let them know in the next week or two. Right, can we say officially in a minute's time that, um, the board is wanting to accept these. Subtle plans with no comments? I'll email him, he might know. Agreement for services without the PC doing this law assessors position. So this thing is a moving target, it keeps changing, um. Just to let you know, there's nobody in mind to hire, right now, the idea is to. Work with La Muna County Planning Commission to be the service provider for this. And they have been working on this agreement for municipal services. At some point later, uh, they'll, if it moves forward, they'll be, um. Each town will draft up their own job description. But what they're asking now, before we. Before they can move any further is, they would like to know if Wilkens will commit to four hours. Be part of this group. Officially. For board discussion, they haven't really figured out the salary yet. And how much the planning commission will get for. Overseeing this, so like, uh, work is comp. Unemployment, all that will go through the planning commission, it won't be going through the town. The planning commission will pay this person and then they will bill us for the hours actually worked. And they'll kind of oversee this person, they'll do the hiring, the. Reaching out. Reviewing the applications.
Okay, good. Let's talk to do that. Town, take it out, burden off the town, advise somebody. And it sounds like it's going to be kind of a challenge for him, I think. Yeah, so this person will actually be working for three. Working Johnson High Park and Wilkens. And Johnson High Park, they are looking at four hours.
Eight.
Eight hours.
And our four would be 20. Probably we'll have to find some other towns that want to join this consortium. Bring some of the hours up to find somebody, but at least we need to get this in place. So we can do that.
Well, I understand the motion that we agreed for hours. If that's not too jumping ahead on.
No, that's, they want Johnson and High Park have committed to their rate and now they want a. Board's decision to commit to the board.
Yeah. And if that's the motion, I, I will say.
This might not happen, you know, for either of you have. At this point.
Sounds like they've got to work on that point of mind. I'd say it's, it's, it's a tough one, but it's. It's a, it's, puts us in, places in a right direction.
Can I get clarification on this? Is it a real necessity or a hopeful? In terms of what, do we need this person's assistance or?
In my opinion, we have. Wilkens and every other county in the month is struggling with listers. The towns that have lost their listers, they're unable to replace them. And so what towns are doing is they're going to. And if there is, uh, it is, we get less service, much more money. And the idea here is by splitting it across several towns, to take some of that impact away. Currently, we do have two listers. But I don't know how to say this more diplomatically, but they're, they're going to retire at some point.
Yeah.
Within the next few years. And this is beginning that assessment, you know, starting to milk in the outside assessment.
Now, if you hire this assessor. Will we still have to have a company come in and do a complete assessment of the town values?
So they're two different things, I don't think requiring an assessor in terms of doing a reappraisal, I don't think. That is what we're asking for. We are going to need a reappraisal soon. They're a little hard to come by, it's like three to five years out to even get one. This, and assessor is just another name for a lister, I guess.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
I, I guess what I, I have a problem with is, is going to be the cost.
Well, it's grown, jumped quite a bit, and it's already happening all over the country, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's going to be all over the state, you know.
It's, it's, there's definitely some blood loss here, and there's nothing. From what I've heard, that we can do about it, except if we have resources with other towns. To get the services of someone that's qualified.
Someone can.
We're not really going to be able to get listers, again, like, like Tom, I mean, we're just, it's not going to happen. You mean, no one's trainable? You mean, no one's trainable?
Well, they're trainable, I guess, but they're not doing it, that's, uh.
No one wants to work. You know, for six, eight hours a week. Um, for the pressure. That they get, um, and the knowledge. You know, it takes about three years to learn how to. To do, to be an assessor at least.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, yeah. I've been working with Tom for about five years. There's no way I would do the job without Tom. I'm not prepared, I would not take the responsibility to put together a grand list for this town. Assume that responsibility. And as far as cost is concerned, if we leave there an assessor in here to work with Tom. I am happy, happy, happy to back off on my hours. You know, to offset the additional cost for an assessor. But, um, yeah, I, you know, there. No, um. I will go off the record as stating. Wolkert could not just pick one, two people. They become listers and have. A brand list. A workable, a workable brand list. No. It's impossible.
I think we've been discussing this eventually for a long time, as I recall. It's, it's a bitter pill. But I, I can, be honest with you, I can't see a way around it myself. It's just one of those things, it's, it's never gonna get better. But if we're working with lots of towns, ready to call us. I think we can handle it.
No, it doesn't mean that this person will take over, I mean, we. We still could elect someone to come in and, and work with the public and stuff, um. But they wouldn't know the detail that goes into what needs to be done, but they could. Give listers cards to people that come in or help people with maps or answer the basic public questions. But then someone else could be doing some of the harder work. Knowing the rules. You know, there's a whole program that you have to go out and, and put on to how to assess people.
You doing your nails?
I don't know what he's doing. Does that mean he loves me?
They're good company and they don't burn.
All right, we have a motion on the table.
You can do the second.
Can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm gonna let them know. Now, I don't think we're committed to this for ever and ever and ever. This is just the beginning of saying that we're gonna start at the beginning. At some point, I believe in this agreement, you can back out with a certain amount of votes.
With, with building laws also, the, it's going to stay the, the. The program is better and better the more towns that join.
Yeah.
And right now, Eden. Has decided to wait and see. Now, Eden has no listers at all.
Which likely you name no contributions for daddy shares, or horse.
It's, yeah, it's the Eden thing, I guess.
Yeah.
Omar is sitting. And hope that they can hire a lister.
Johnson and Hyde Park have nothing.
They have nothing, right?
And if we have nothing, you can't do a grand list, you can't.
It's quite a mess.
Yeah.
It's, it's a bad situation, yeah. And at one point, even Regent was briefly not joining in, but. Uh, this is gonna be managed by LCPC and, yeah, so.
They went with a, so they're starting on a bunch of towns down by Middlebury, they're starting the same.
Same, same thing, yeah.
Well, I think it's the wave of the future, whether we like it or not. And you can't give the, bring first the element. You, you pay him the hours and the wages. And the amount of ticks and training.
Yeah, and.
Years of training.
What I can tell is, training is, only comes through experience. Even you train them. The procedures and say, boy, but it's experience that makes the grand list work, yeah.
Brian, do you think of a quick forest update unless you'd like to, um. Um, did you talk about the Habitat for Humanity in your last one?
We did, and it was still hinging on this last week's.
So I did get an email from Kate on Thursday that. Please to report that La Loyal Habitat for Humanities Board has voted to proceed. With accepting a donation of land along Route fifteen for the construction of a duplex that will be permanently affordable. Um. They'd like to give us a short presentation, um, at our next, um, board meeting. And Kip Burner from Habitat for Humanity will join us, um. But before that, she said, uh, that the V H C B, Mount Housing Conservation Board. Approved the grant of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Towards the acquisition. Of the community forest and twenty thousand towards a stewardship endowment. For Northern Rivers land. Um. This is contingent upon, um, acquisition of the full seven hundred. Six acres excluding the one acre lot to be donated, um.
What's this one acre lot?
It's on Route fifteen. Hmm, only Shawnee, which used to live there.
Yeah.
But there's a problem. Because this fire department burnt the trailer down. So it is now a grounds field.
Right, oh, hell, of course.
So, um. I haven't been able to get back to Kate again, I don't, I'm sure whether. She's asking me to reach out to them or she's going to. To see if the LCPC will do.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, studying on that, I did talk to Seth about it, and he said, absolutely, um. So she's gonna be working with Rota to subdivide out that one acre parcel. Just to let me know. That's why we got the grant from the Vermont Housing. Finance Agency, um. Or Vermont Housing Company Board, V H C B Board. Because it's going to be housing on there.
Right, Habitat for Humanity.
Right.
Can't understand why they would want to say there was a ground.
Well, there's an assessment she sent here, um. Well, actually, I don't quite understand it, uh, based to environmental assessment. Um. She said it's a possibility.
Because it was just, it wasn't that large of a trailer, don't believe there was that much stuff.
That's what they, um, when they had to do something like that, when they were looking at all the land.
Oh, they didn't, they did it.
No, they haven't, they haven't. They're probably not Phase One. Phase One just identifies if there's a potential. Temptation.
Well, they need to do a round field study.
Phase two, round field, actually goes down and does some sampling to see if.
How many years ago did they burn it, do you know?
Well, I was telling Clark, I remember building it there.
It's gotta be fifteen anyway.
You got. Bleaching.
Oh, you know, the trailer, you basically have it's been ruined.
Yeah.
Maybe hopefully there won't be.
They could have.
Yeah, they're, they're ruining the my.
I know.
I don't know if it was even a suffix system. In the near, probably water.
No.
No, that's good.
It's on the right hand side of Route fifteen going towards hardware before the Bartlett's house. And before the, there's five ranges. It was all around, turnabout, between the school driveway and.
The trailer was. It closer to the Bartlett's in the back.
Yeah.
It got. I mean, that was years ago, it was. Route fifteen, if not twenty years ago. And I know we, we had to go through there and make sure all the. It was no asbestos. No oil. Anything, any petroleum products, that had to be all gone before the burn.
It's a chance.
Well, like I said, we did, we knew the trailer, it's fun, it's fun, it's, it's been a great. That's about it.
So, um, we'll move on to the. Municipal planning grant for the schoolhouse revitalization and, um. And you are a team approval, but I don't see it, it's just, um. So, oh, yeah. Well, we're talking, we were talking with, um, the planning commission, um. The regional planning commission, Kurt was here, we were meeting. About the rail trail, but we met after losing. One of the things that's brought up in one of our recent. Schoolhouse revitalization committee meetings was the possibility of applying for the two thousand twenty-three municipal planning grant. Um. To look at the feasibility of having a, um, cafe. In the schoolhouse. I reached out, um, to the. Town Planning Commission to make sure they, they were not going to access this grant this year, and they're not. So I guess, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna propose to you that, um. The board approve moving forward to apply for this municipal planning grant. To, um. Look at the feasibility of having a cafe over here as an economic driver. And also looking at, uh, parking issues. Um, related to having a cafe here because we're kind of getting squeezed.
Yeah.
In here, um. I thought Sal was going to send me, um. Got the name, that something to sign today. Um. To agree to that, but I guess we'll have to do that in our next meeting if, um. If the board agrees to go forward. Allow us to go forward. We thought it was a good idea, it was recommended to our committee because, um, it would be. More proof that we are, uh, really investigating uses with uses when we go out to our funders. Look for grants and so forth, that, um, we've actually. Done our homework.
Yeah, sure, would it be nice to have a little restaurant in that town? I mean, even if it's breakfast and lunch. You know, a lot of the communities have lost that.
Right.
And it's, it's like a gathering place for the community.
So it's all right if I have them continue on this time with that idea in mind?
Yeah.
Why couldn't they put parking in front?
They could, but study, but I'm gonna.
Right.
I'm, I'm gonna, um.
I mean, there's enough room for ten cars at least. In front of the old school.
Would you like a motion on this?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we continue. With the, uh. Process of the municipal planning grant, the schoolhouse revitalization.
Could you give me permission also, and I motion to, it's a resolution, sign the resolution?
Yeah.
To sign a resolution.
And give you permission to sign a resolution.
Yeah, that's right. Certainly.
They've got a good company.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
With the cabinet.
Yeah, come on. You know.
Oh, don't beat Stan Thomas, Curry.
Are you allergic? Hold on, no, it is, no.
The other thing is, they want, um, so we've read our last meeting to, um. Up to ten thousand dollars for an engineer and. Um, the planning commission has put together a. RFP, request for proposals for a feasibility study and architectural design for the schoolhouse. Um, they just want, um. Your blessings to move forward in this. Sal mentioned a few things from our meeting, um, if he can, all the, um. Applications will go through the planning commission.
He changed that, oh, okay.
Yeah, he's gonna go through that, make sure that everything meets. The qualifications and go through him, and then the committee will be set up, who can kick out. Uh, who they want to do.
That's good, that's good. Must have.
Mm-hmm. So could we have a motion to, like, this RFP?
I'll make it.
Put it out, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. We've got further discussion on this. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. The La Loyal County Rail Trail Grant, um. Did meet during the day, um, on that with the people. Who are funding that, the State Agency of Transportation, um, because I had reached out and told them we, we didn't like the. Um, most employment idea, you know, the planning commission. But they did come down and meet, it was requiring the grant, they threw out some ideas, um. One thing we did learn though was that we could lease that land. On the other side of the rail trail, um, gazebo. Yeah. From, from the state for free. If it was related to the rail trail. And they suggested more parking. There, especially if people with snowmobile. Yeah. Trailers needed to.
Like free, free is good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I plan to talk to Seth, and so, um. He's gonna try to write this municipal grant to incorporate. That parking.
No.
Kinda into this. Um, that rail trail grant, after I thought about it a lot, um, we actually, we talked to them about. Maybe, um. Um, that rail trail grant, after I thought about it a lot, um, we actually, we talked to them about maybe, um. Sidewalks on Route fifteen, uh, helping us not Route fifteen, I've. School street flat ones, just save the test ring lots. When I'm talking with them, it's gonna cost like thirty or forty thousand dollars. And our match is twenty percent. And it's federal money. You have to jump through the hoops. They, you know, they talked about building a cement pad and putting up portal land and screening it and it's like. I don't know. I'm not into doing anything with that grant. It's my personal feeling type.
Look, can we still lease the land without the grain? Again, in the line striking? Is that what that's for?
This guy.
That's crazy.
It is. It's, it's, they were just, it's like, really? You know, maybe we have to take eight thousand to study how to put a striking line? We could do it so much cheaper. We can do it and have it done for that. My personal recommendation is that we don't apply for that grant for anything.
That sounds like a.
I can't think of anything that it's worth paying twenty percent for. We already have a trailhead.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, as long as we've leased this land.
Yeah, we didn't think it was tied to it.
I, I agree with you.
I didn't hear that. I heard that it has to be used for rail trail something. And they brought up the parking idea. And I don't think we need to study it. Uh, we might need to make sure there's no wetlands or anything there or.
Over here.
Yeah, is there any on the other side?
Yeah. You know, it runs off.
But do we need to spend a lot of money to study that?
If, if you don't go any further than the old foundation to the.
Mm-hmm, depot.
Depot building, you're fine. That's when it starts getting into a low area and a lot of drainage from. That side of the, the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Down through. But you could add in probably another. Twenty to thirty parking areas. Potentially, you know, like you said, it's a snowmobile trailer and truck. It cuts down, but at least it would give them. Someplace that our residents want this road nice.
That's where we're gonna get away from. We were careful worried about people parking over, like in the weekend, burping or, or, you know, downward.
That would, that would ease that problem.
I don't, I don't know where the line is out front, but the tree here. We could have some parking lots going this way and cut some of that lawn. Down a little, but there is a, there is a water line or something going to turn.
Running right by the pool.
Well, the, the, um, one up on the hill is on the other side, but on this side, I don't know if it's septic or what's. I have to look at the brands.
You don't want a lot of winter traffic over those lines.
You run into some really bad problems. Well, as long as you go in and. Put in the foam insulation, it's. Very cool for it, so it doesn't press the fence. I mean, still does that all the time. It's not a big deal.
Well, I kinda asked, so Seth's gonna try to make that, try to incorporate that. Piece over there into the feasibility of the cafe.
Oh, okay.
So we all.
We're on the same page here.
Happy with that. I feel like we're just pushing it. We don't have any money. We don't have any. Real idea what we could apply for.
Yeah.
But someone else does. Town report. Thing is, we don't have any in-town auditors. It falls on the select board. What's your thoughts this year?
Town audit or?
Town report because, oh, I understood. Town auditors put the town report together, but we did away with town auditors, so the responsibility falls on the select board. Um. Deb and I did it last year.
Right.
But. I mean, I would help with it, but I'm not doing it all beyond, um.
Well, the.
We do have a stipend of five hundred dollars. I think we didn't take it last year, but.
It could fall into, uh, into the project we introduced by people.
So what?
Well, at least with no. There's no problem.
Well, why are we gonna do like for pictures tomorrow and the theme tomorrow?
Well, we got the, yeah.
Right, so that's why I'm.
Well, you wanna do it now?
Well, some of it. I think we need to start. We can't, it'll be on us before we know it.
Didn't you last year put it out on your front page forum to?
We did a photo contest.
Photo contest.
Yeah.
Put it in, incorporated.
Yeah, that was what happened last year.
I didn't know.
Did anybody take any good pictures of the event?
Yeah.
Event?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the, those thing in that. There are, there are photos of that.
There are.
Wonderful.
Uh-huh.
I think a lot of them are on our website right now.
I had asked Ryan Bierke too to take someone. I mean, did or not, I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. Have we done anything else this year? I mean, we've closed the. Um, bridge on Brook Road. Do we do anything else bigger? Well, we have a park in the town yard and, um. The skating rink.
We do a cover photo of a risk illegal jumper this year.
It wasn't me.
No, I know.
Just a pot.
Don't hit me.
You know, I think there are varieties of. The garden. Or they would help see them. And. It was quite a.
I like to see people, you know, people within a community.
Yeah. Can you tell us the school board? If they got exposed to.
Yeah, they have their own.
So they have their own report.
Yeah. For two different entities.
Now, wouldn't it be nice to do the community get together with the guys?
Oh, yeah, that's an excellent idea.
That way you, you join people, you're doing something, you're trying to do something.
It seems more.
Organizable for people and, you know, when that was going on.
We made it down here with the kids and. Yeah, which is seen.
Yeah, I think most people enjoy having that opportunity.
Yeah, and I think it's something they've been missing for a long time.
There's a great photo of the movie line.
I'll back up George Hardesley.
All right, so we know what our pictures and so forth are gonna be and, um.
Third term opening house? Do they have an opening?
And I did, and I went when, I don't know if we have any pictures. You can ask them.
You have to ask them.
Yeah.
The only one you could ask would be Jim.
Yeah, we can ask Jim. So I guess Kurt, Deb and I are going to be doing it again unless anyone else wants to. Okay. Hope, uh, well.
Yeah, so, um. I, I believe that Belinda ordered this. The research would be done. I was asking for a quote. Um, it's for four hundred maps in Mylar. Um, they'll be delivered to. Profile lab. And, um, they would give the scannings. We have, this is an addition to what we already have. So I think what we have now is. Turning back to making eighty, right, is the. And this is the segment that goes from eighty-five all the way back. To where the books are handwritten.
Well, these are just maps. I don't think we have any scanned maps. Any scanned maps? Do we have? No. So we'd be putting all the maps that we have. We would scan them to put, be put on our website.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't place the orders. I'm just not quite sure with this.
Yeah. That's what it looks like. So all our maps are surveys. Are hung in the vault in Mylar envelopes. And that's how we preserve them and, um. But if someone wants to see one of these maps, uh, they have to come in physically and look at it. And then you have to try to piece it together with fifteen little pieces of paper on. Copyer, if you want a copy of it. This way it would, um. You could print it right off your computer. And it, they would also index. The maps.
Sounds like it's gonna be all our vision.
Map images, we don't index.
Yeah, we're gonna have to index and so on and brings up an area stable for.
Right.
Properties or parcels.
Well, so you know what map is gonna have, whose property that is.
Yeah, so when you bring up the images, you have everything.
Right.
It's be a natural part of our, uh, harbor. This you could put it in your harbor.
Yeah.
Because it is gonna help. Realtors.
Yeah.
Everybody else. And we have coconut down. Have a fusion system right there.
So I guess Belinda's looking for a motion for the board to allow us to come out of parking funds.
Soon as we do. She's.
Not the options left. Do we have any, any other discussion or thoughts on that, sorry?
So this will be coming out of our vote motion.
If we make a motion.
If you have a right.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll show you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to. Um. Engage co-file to, um, scan our maps to be an index to be put on our town. On the town fusion system. Six towns in twenty-five hours to come from our. I was wondering about them moving forward, like how. Periodically would this have to be done in the future and whether the board was considering purchasing a scanner? Um, that can be used. Um, for, you know, perhaps old building permits or. Um. If this is how it's gonna go. Be outsourced.
I think the reason it's being outsourced is because of the, the block. What were you talking about, the info?
Well, the zoning is very important.
It is.
Zoning permits.
Oh, right.
It's two files. Did you, um, were you, you, did you know anything about this or no or?
No, we came up with this.
Uh-huh.
I don't even have an extension.
Do you have any other questions about this, Deb? Do you think we should, um, try to call her or, um. Have her respond to some of our questions first?
Yeah, I think that would be great because I know that, um. Belinda had talked about purchasing a scanner in the past, but I don't know. If she really. Fully addressed that with the board.
Yeah, I don't. She did, I think. These are all bits and pieces in my.
Right, we did talk about, um, purchasing a scanner. Um, doing it ourselves, looking into. How we were gonna index it. And whether that would go on the fusion or whether it would go on, um. You know, just the Lister's website? Or zoning section?
I think it sounds like we need to have a discussion. With all of the participants. Everything. It's maps, et cetera. And understand what. What her needs are and if there's any overlapping, then what we're gonna see AI. In this.
Well, I wouldn't think it was overlap. I agree with you. I think we need a. Further discussion of all the parts that we're looking at, not just keep taking our little.
Right.
Parts. I don't think it will overlap with C I, C I. Um, I think it's. Different because it'll have. Um. Because it's official. It has a stamp of an engineer with CIA tag. It might be the same thing, but it won't be official. So do you wanna vote on, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we wanna vote on it and, um, note it down and bring it back up in the next meeting with. Discussion with Belinda or you wanna just move forward or?
I'm basically.
I'll withdraw your motions.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn and we'll ask Belinda to attend our next meeting to, um. Discuss this further and maybe get some more background on different, um. Aspects of what we're thinking about for scanning. So we can understand the whole picture.
Right.
And the last thing is the town hill culvert spoven study. Um, Joey is done, our engineer who did the, uh, Brook Road, who did a wonderful job overseeing that, making sure. Everything was done correctly. He's finished that. They just finished that up. We received that grant on revitalization from District. SIPS. To do a study of town hill road to figure out, um. Whether it would be best to replace it with a box culvert or maybe a bridge at some point. The best solution because, uh, remember it's sinking in, the bottom of the culvert is. Is broken and it's expanding out and. So they gave us a, um, grant for sixty thousand. So they gave us a, um, grant for sixty thousand dollars. Joey just wants, um, the board to confirm that, um. We can move forward with that, that we're not gonna have to put it out to bid. He was the only one that submitted a. Uh, actually, District Six just said, get your engine, told me to get your engineer to submit a. Cost estimate for the grant, which I did, I didn't put it up to bid, so is the. Board comfortable with moving forward with him, with this grant? On his bid, or do you feel like we have to put it out to bid?
Is there a, we go to the board?
They told, no, they, Joe was attached to the grant, his bid, and it came in for the exact amount of money that he submitted.
Absolutely, I would go.
Oh, yeah, he's per, per. Yeah.
He just wants to make sure the board is comfortable, um, who wants to start doing some borings and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, maybe get it started, yes.
Okay, that's good. I don't have anything else.
Richard has another motion too.
I made a motion, it'll be adjourned, it's like, we're, it's seven thirty-one P M on the rail days. To call. It's not cold yet.
I know. I know.